I'm at Council Chambers 111 East Maple. With that being said, Mr. City Manager, I'll turn it over to you to talk about tourism and the museum master plan.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I will be happy to welcome our Director of Parks, Recreation and Tourism, Morris Heide, to get us started.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Morris Heide, Director of Parks, Recreation and Tourism. As many folks are aware, we have been working on a tourism and museum master plan for the last several months. And this evening, we have our consultant PGA V here to update the council on the progress that has been made so far. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce Jennifer Goke, who's the project manager with PGA V, and she will introduce other folks and get the presentation going. So Jennifer?
Thank you, Mayor and council for having us here today. I'm Jennifer Goke with PGA V Architects. We are located at 1900 West 47th Place in Westwood, Kansas, here locally in town. I also have with me Tom Owen, who is out of our St. Louis office, and Tom represents our destinations group. We also on our team have many other members, Andy Strucka from our planners group, who's not with us tonight, but Tom and I are here representing our firm. So we thank you very much for having us here tonight. We are going to share with you our progress on the Independence Tourism and Museum Master Plan update, and this is not a final report, but we do... Is it not coming? Am I not loud enough? Sorry. Maybe Tom's louder. So this is our progress report for this evening, and we hope you ask any questions that you have tonight. So with Tom will take it over, and I'll interrupt occasionally here.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
We can. Tom, if I can interrupt just for a moment, I did not take care of a piece of business that I should have taken care of. So if you don't get mind, give me 30 seconds. I want to welcome DeeDee Meyer here. She's from the Laber Law Firm. She's filling in for us as our city clerk. So I wanted everyone to welcome her and make her feel at home so that she will actually come back for other city council meetings because we definitely need her. So glad to have you here. So thank you for filling in. Also, I did another piece of business I didn't do, Tom, was I didn't take the role. And so we certainly need to do that. So DeeDee, if you would be kind enough to do the roll call, and we'll have one person that will be on the screen, so that'll be Jared Fears will be on the screen. So I have to kind of wait for him to probably turn it on. So as we proceed then, go ahead.
Fears?
Here.
Perkins? Stewart?
Here.
McCandless?
Here.
Steinmeier?
Here.
Hobart? May Rowland?
Here. Perfect, well done. Thank you. Okay, and with that, those pieces of business out of the way, Tom, the floor is yours, and I thank you for allowing me the interruption.
Well, thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. We've been very excited about getting to know people in the community through our process. And so we're, as Morris and Jennifer both pointed out, this is what we're sharing tonight is not only not the final report, it's a work in process, but it's a very high level work. In the interest of time, we're hitting a few of the highlights of our strategy going forward. So, you know, as we said, you know, open to any questions, but just happy to just give you a brief update of kind of where we are and some of our thoughts so far. Brief introduction about us, we're going to give you an overview of the process, a little bit about who we've met with so far, some potential of the project in terms of attracting attendance, and some of our strategies dealing with something we're calling hubs and connectors and the museum. So you'll see that. So just very briefly about our firm, we were founded in 1965, more than 140 employees, offices in Kansas City, St. Louis, and Orlando, and we have a diverse practice, but one of our specialties is creating tourism destinations and things that really are very visitor focused and also economic development focused. And as Jennifer introduced, we have, we're one company, but we have three different specialties, and all three are represented in the work that we're doing for Independence. Just a brief snapshot of some of our clients. You can see that in addition to Independence, we've had the pleasure of working with some world-class organizations, and so we're going to try to bring our best for you as well. Just to remind everyone what we were engaged to do, and that's to provide a vision for Independence to fulfill its potential as a tourism destination. At fulfilling its potential, we've been looking a lot at potential so far and are actually optimistic about it. And that part of the tourism destination is the major new museum, but that's not all it is, and you'll see some of the other thoughts we have about what that's going to include. Our process was a three-phase planning process. We are now in the third phase, but again, we are not finished. The first phase was all just digging into the data, trying to understand the community, the market potential, the landscape, the cultural assets that exist, all the things we basically doing our homework. The second phase got into looking at what are some of our specific recommendations? What are some of the things that we could do? And the third phase is looking at priorities, trying to formulate the plan, engaging again with you and with others in the community, and really moving forward to what is going to be our final recommendation. Early in the process, we met with quite a few stakeholders, members of the tourism professional community. This list is, we think, everyone that we met with, but it was a very, very good process. We learned a lot. We think we spoke to a pretty good wide range of folks and, you know, understand lots of different interests, but it was great to learn that there was also a lot in common in terms of trying to make Independence a better place as a community and as a tourism One example of some of the digging that we did was just to simply look at how many people visit some of the current cultural destinations within the community. And these tend to be more cultural, so like, for example, sports is not included on here. But within the cultural assets that you have today, you know, you have a number of entities that are drawing significant numbers of visitors, and that's good. It's a good strength to build on. So these numbers, we had requested numbers from each of the entities. What we tried to look at, given the anomalies of COVID and the post-COVID years, we tried to sort of look across all of that and come up with a representative annual visitation. So that's what these numbers represent. It's what we believe to be representative of the numbers that these museums and cultural attractions would get, not necessarily from a particular year, but kind of an average, kind of just what felt like the right number. So that's what this slide is about. And by comparison, we pulled some data, there's within the museum world, and this was specifically looking at the museum part of the project, there's an organization called the Association of Midwest Museums, and so we belong to that organization, we were able to pull some data from that. And what this data shows is that the attendance for a number of museums that are Midwest, many not in large communities, some that you've probably never heard of, and yet there's some pretty impressive numbers. And so this is another illustration, we believe, of the potential in some of the investments that we're considering recommending, that there is significant attendance growth that we believe in having the right product. And so just another point of reference in comparison with what you have currently. One of the pieces of information that we learned that I personally got most excited about was just looking at the market potential. So you have 2.3 million people that we consider to be a part of the resident market. That would be a one-hour, even to two-hour drive time. But the, so the metro KC area, basically. But Visit KC reports that 24 million visitors come to the metro area every year. That's an enormous population to draw from. And one thing that's really interesting about this is that 46% of those are visiting family and friends. Family and friends are a huge influencer about where people go when they come to a community. So you've got 24 million people, and we have almost half of them visiting family and friends and open to the suggestions and recommendations that those family and friends would offer. So one of the things that we're looking at is, you know, how can we begin to project a positive image of Independence as a destination and have those positive referrals from those families and friends? And you'll see some of the ways that we want to get at that. But the people are there, there's no question. So a few of the, these are some of the highlights, and I'm not going to spend too much time on this, it's better to look at the pictures. So the, one of the things we looked at, Jennifer, do you want to talk at this point? Okay.
So ultimately, that last slide is what our master plan report will include, and including our objectives and our process, and our findings. This highlights in pink the city assets, the land ownership of the city, and the reason this is important as we look at opportunities for the future museum. So we want to understand what the city owns and how we can ideally place the future museum. The facilities the city owns are all assets that characterize the current tourism landscape, and we want to find ways that we can leverage these assets to increase the number of visitors to each other as well as to Independence. So the more visitors we can bring to Independence, the better opportunities we have to increase economic growth. Not only are the city assets, but you've got all of these other assets in Independence that also bring visitors, and they may bring visitors for one purpose, but how do we build on that? How do we capture the people that are coming for one use and bring them to our other facilities and, again, bring more economic growth to Independence? So we've also talked about how do we increase the length of stay, make people want to come back and/or visit another destination? What is that compelling reason to share their experience with friends and family, which is what Tom was referring to, because so many people are visiting the metro? We've looked at how you enter into Independence. So you're kind of nestled in here, you're a big community, but there are all these ways to get in, and it's hard to identify when you are within Independence. So how do we identify our gateways? And there are a number of ways to do that, specifically along I-70. How do you know when you've entered Independence and, you know, where you are in the city? We've talked about hubs. There are a num, two areas we've really focused on, one kind of centered around the Cable Dahmer area. There's a lot of shopping, hotels, restaurants, and development that bring visitors to Independence. Then there's the downtown hub and its vicinity, it's more than just the downtown. And we've talked about these areas represented in green within what we refer to as the downtown area, including the Englewood's Art District, the temples, the Truman Neighborhood, the Truman Library, and the square. There's also the red outliers, which are not necessarily hubs, but they are important assets that we want to connect to the visitor. So when we talk about connectors, we've got the future green corridor, which is important, as well as the Truman Connected Loop and the Independence Square, but we want to create other offshoots of connectors between these other assets so that the visitor can really find easily where they want to go within Independence and build on those connections. So when we talk about characterizing the hub, you know, it can be done a number of ways, but it just gives you the look and feel of the environment you're trying to create and the character of the city. And when we talk about walkability, it not only refers to a safe way to move within the city, but a pleasurable one. And for example, some of the characteristics we're sharing are the bicycle friendly, the wider sidewalks, the pedestrian paving, light, pedestrian feel for lights. This, you know, makes people want to stay and enjoy their experience in the downtown. And a lot of these characteristics are already being addressed with the Truman Connected Plan and the downtown square. So we want to make sure that, and we've done a number of discussions with WSP and with administration to try and understand what that plan looks like, and ultimately, we want to implement a plan for the entire downtown that fits in with what's being created with these two existing plans that you guys have been working on for several years now. And that kind of brings us to a little bit more focused attention on the museum specifically, and Tom's going to share with you more about that.
So we began talking about, you know, what could the museum be? What could, and of course, it started with a bigger, better National Frontier Trails Museum, and as we talked about it, we said, well, it can be that, but we think it can be more than that as well. So some of the attributes that we believe the museum can have, we're calling it a 21st Century Museum, which means immersion, interactivity, and excitement. Museums today are very different from even 20 years ago, but, you know, I think when you say the word museum now, some people still think of dusty old objects and cases, but that's not what a 21st museum, 21st century museum is. We want a museum that has inclusive history. Too many museums in this country have told a very one-sided version of history, and so we want to be inclusive and tell a more comprehensive story. For example, there's local history, you know, the Frontier Trails Museum mostly talks about the people that left. We talked about celebrating all the people that went away, but what about some of the people that stayed here and made their lives here? And so you'll see some examples that we have about that. It would include trails history, and we think there is a very powerful story there. But we said, what if it could be really not just a museum, but a museum and cultural center? And that those two things could begin to complement each other. For, you know, just one example of that would be that if you have performances going on at night, that's a time where people typically are not going to the museum, but theater patrons could see the museum and maybe get interested in that, and then museum patrons could be aware of the theater and get interested in that. So there's some kind of cross-selling that we could do by co-locating those together. We wanted to be a very child-friendly atmosphere. You might not think of the National Trails Museum as being child-friendly, but we think we can do that. Mentioned open at night, repeatable. We believe that museum has to have experiences that are inherently repeatable or changeable to create repeat visitation. And just in general, world-class quality and scale. We believe this museum needs to be a top destination for Kansas City, not just for Independence. So some of the benefits, it can be, museums don't make money, I'll say that right away, museums do not make money, but they are economic drivers. They can drive considerable economic development. Mentioned that it could be open at night, and depending on the location, could really help to activate downtown, and we've had a lot of meetings with the downtown folks that it seems like, I love your downtown, you've got a great thing, but there's like a just, it needs a little more critical mass in terms of activating it at nighttime. We believe the museum can be a source of community pride. That's our museum, and that really represents what it's great about this community. Again, the co-location of the performing arts, you could have an outdoor amphitheater associated with it. We talked about including African-American history, such as the NECC, that, you know, we've learned about that story as well as others that we would want to include. It's possible that the museum could be, contribute to the location of the Santa Calagon days. That rolls up my tongue a lot easier now than it did when I first started, I'll tell you. So. Space for traveling exhibitions, things that you could bring to the community that they might not see otherwise. Not only things for children, but even a part of this that could be considered a children's museum and other outdoor exhibits and site development. So in the spirit of highlights, we have a whole lot of these illustrations that we've done, but I'm just going to mention these few for now to give you a flavor. The story of Hiram Young and the building of the wagons, I thought was one of the coolest stories I've ever heard, and so we would want to create some sort of an immersion experience that puts you in Hiram Young's workshop and lets you know, you know, what he accomplished, what made a great wagon, why did people buy his wagons? What was life like to take a wagon and go on one of these trails? The children's museum, how can we get kids to discover their place in history and discover learning about the community and the history of this community? A great new stage for the community theater. Building on pop culture, I have to tell you, when I first told my kids I was going to go work at Independence, they went, oh, that's where the Oregon Trail started. They knew it from the game. You have an opportunity to build on a very powerful IP, an intellectual property, that a lot of communities would kill for, they'd be very happy to get that. And I think that's something that we can really leverage in creating this museum, is the power of that. It is a great IP, and, you know, whether it's a game-based experience or what, if you're getting kids interested in history, everything is fair game to do that. So we, we got really excited the more we thought about the possibility of that. The example of the History Lab, most people are taught history in a way that's not very exciting. They're taught that history is a bunch of facts and dates and, you know, old presidents and things that they don't really care very much about, but history is really a process of discovery and investigation and learning about, looking at evidence and, you know, continuing to look and discover. And history changes because what we understand about it changes when we look further and we look at it through that scientific lens. We want to introduce visitors to that concept and empower them to understand how to look at history so that they can help shape the future, which that's really what it comes down to. So, and I mentioned before, like the local history with the NECC neighborhood. So those are just a few of the highlights of the kinds of experiences that we can imagine being in this museum, which would really make it, I think, a powerful asset for your So how do you fund something like this? Well, nothing is definite yet, but just some of the possibilities that we've talked about that would be a normal way to start a process like this. First of all, we would say it most likely would be a public-private partnership of some sort. There's capital funding and operating funding. Capital funding, we would have, we would recommend that you would have a robust development plan, you know, seeking private contributions from individuals and foundations, others that would find this a compelling thing to want to be associated with. Corporate giving, or there are also public sources with federal grants, state of Missouri, Jackson County, or the city. And then there's operating funding. Again, I mentioned that museums don't make money, but they can certainly contribute significantly to their operating requirements, and earn revenue from ticket sales, rentals, membership, and sponsorship. Sponsorship is different from corporate philanthropy. Sponsorship is like advertising, you know, it's, marketing departments do sponsorship, foundations do philanthropy, right? So contributed revenue from individuals and foundations, that's an ongoing thing. Most museums have an ongoing development program, but they would continue to raise money for operations. Federal and state grants, and then some sort of sales tax or taxing mechanism that would help support it. So don't know which combination of those things it could be, but that's sort of the list of the kinds of things that could be pursued to fund the museum. We have a preliminary building program, and Jennifer, if you want to talk about this, or we can just give you a general sense. Why don't you go ahead?
This kind of outlines the different program elements. The museum in blue, the performing arts, we met with all of the different community groups, and so we looked at the sermon center as we believe that ultimately, you know, in your long-range planning, that the sermon center might need to be replaced, and so the performing arts replaces that, but also provides some added needs for the different groups that, you know, practice, because right now they practice in multiple locations. Event space, that helps with the economics. So always, if you have a museum or you have a theater, if we can offer event space that can be rentable, it helps with your bottom line. We've got other areas which are support areas for all of the above and potentially could include, you know, tourism offices or other entities that might play into all of everything else that's going on at this location. And then there's just a summary there, just so everyone understands there's a subtotal. But then we also have to account for circulation and grossing of the building, so this can go up and down. We did include a restaurant of some type, you know, it could be a cafe, but if the museum ends up being in the middle of downtown and there's all these restaurants, you know, that could be more of a vending type thing. So this is what we start with, and then as we refine the details, the numbers can get refined.
So as we said, we have more to do, but there is, we are going to be meeting with the downtown developer that the city has brought on and just try to coordinate our activities with that person, continue to refine our recommendations, and eventually work toward having final recommendations. I wanted to make one more point. A big part of our thinking on this was, you know, what can a city do? You know, cities are different from a private corporation in terms of what you can do, and part of what I think the city can do is create an environment for others to invest. So some of the things that we're talking about in terms of downtown improvement would be ways to create that environment for others to invest. The museum is another one of those things. By directly promoting the museum and initiating the museum and seeing it through, that's the kind of commitment that would then might encourage a hotel or other kind of investments that would come with that. So, you know, the city is actually more active in terms of creating things. You know, we've worked on public projects before where the city didn't really want to build anything, they wanted to create the atmosphere, but didn't, and so you're doing both. You're, you know, you're already working toward creating the atmosphere, we're trying to strengthen that, and you've expressed interest in developing this museum into something that could be a very powerful asset for you. So that's, we have focused our work on trying to think, you know, what can you, the city accomplish that would create the environment for tourism and support investment, not only from within the community, but from outside the community too. So with that, do you have anything you wanted to add?
Oh, I just was going to add one other thing. We did look at the calendar and the long, looking out at 2026, when the World Cup is going to be in the metro area, and we do, you know, we talked about it being an opportunity. Now, you're not going to have a new museum by 2026, but, you know, maybe some of these other improvements, I mean, you're so close to potentially, you know, the venues that are going to be being used, how do we, you know, get Independence on the map, so to speak, so that people are staying here, eating here, and, you know, enjoying the, everything that Independence has to offer? So, you know, maybe some of these ideas kind of rise to the top, maybe, you know, it's the I-70 corridor, but, you know, so that people, you know, know they're in Independence and have a fond memory and maybe want to come back to explore it further and on another visit, so. But we thank you, and I open up to any questions. Oh, one last thing. So in your booklet, Tom just wanted to show you some of the early concepts, but the other concepts are in the booklet. We weren't going to go through them all tonight, and we start with just inspiration images on the first page, and then there's kind of a rendering on the second page of kind of furthering the idea. So the museum, you know, still has a lot of further thought, but it gives you a flavor for some of the early concepts that we've started to explore. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Anyone have any questions?
I'm just so impressed with the thoughtfulness that's gone into this. We're big museum people at the McCandless-Taylor household, and so we go to lots of places, and I can just see the imagination in this, and I'm thrilled. So thank you for bringing your great thinking and imagination. I think we've got something wonderful to build from.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Nope, I agree and I concur. Excellent job, thank you, and a lot of thought going into this process, so appreciate your time. this process. So appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Tom, hang on one second. Please proceed.
You know, I wasn't gonna let them get out of here, Tom. Appreciate it. You know, we have talked a lot about this. There's a part that I want to say publicly. First of all, yes, thank you for all the hard work, but this was easy. This is the easy part, right? And I look forward to all the rest of it. You know, a few years back, we rebranded with this, A Great American Story, which I have not been thrilled with. And I sort of realized the part I haven't been thrilled with is the fact that what is the story, right? We have these parts and pieces of our history. We've got the Truman part, we've got the Trails part, we've got the NEC, we've got these interesting parts and pieces. But how does that fit together? And how does that talk about, you know, what independence is? Or who are we as a people? And that's the story we need help with. That's the story that tourism needs to tell. That's what our master plan needs to put together for us. And that's the part I think we need to focus on for the World Cup. We need to be able to tell that coherent story, whatever that great American story is, by then. I think that's the part that we need to focus on in the shorter term. And it's hard to put all those pieces together. I mean, we've got Joseph Smith and Brigham Young and, you know, the Mormon church that led to the founding of a state and a giant religion. We've got, you know, Hiram Young, a slave that owned slaves, that was an early millionaire in the mid-1800s. We've got, you know, one of the most famous Western outlaws that, you know, roamed around and his brothers buried in the park just down the street. You know, it's a wide variety of things. And then we have a country boy that never should have been in the White House that made one of the biggest decisions any human has ever made on the face of the earth. So, you know, how does that all fit together? How does that tell the story of who we are? And we need help with that. I think we need help with that. We need some help with our identity. That causes us some problems from time to time, I think. And it would be nice to have some help with that. Now, secondly, on the museum, just so people know and are fully aware, nothing's in stone as of yet, but I am, as I've said to you privately many times before, I'm gonna push for this not to be a 21st century museum, but a 22nd century museum. I'm gonna push to have this be a thing that doesn't even exist yet. Because independence will get exactly one shot at something this cool and this amazing and this big. We're gonna get one shot at this, so it has to be as good as it can be for as long as it will last. So, if we're gonna get more than 4,000 people to go visit the Bingham Wagner and 2,000 to the Vale, and we're gonna help the Model Railroad guys out, and if we're gonna get these folks to come to all our places, it's gotta be amazing. It's gotta be better than anything any of us have, can even imagine sitting here today. So, thank you so much, and I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Our Mr. City Manager next on the agenda is the Fire Department Strategic Plan, so...
Again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, without further ado, I'll ask our Fire Chief, Doug Short, to come forward and present this information to the council.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members. Thank you for letting me get a chance to get up here and give you an update of what's going on in the Fire Department. Back in the end of January, first of February, you had a report from our consulting agency that gave us about 45 recommendations that we needed to look at as a city for the Fire Department. So what we did from that point on is, as a Fire Department, we had approximately 23 members from myself all the way down to the firefighter ranks. We sat down and we did a strategic plan. We wanted to take those recommendations, look at how they affected us and what we could have the most effect on in the best way that we could. So basically, after that study was completed, we had our strategic planning session. From that, those 45 basic, both major and minor, recommendations that were in that, what we looked at is we said, okay, these kind of fit in four primary goals, and I'll get to those four goals here in just a minute. From those goals, then, just like any other strategic plan, we looked at and prioritized some objectives to those goals that we thought we could accomplish in the next two years. We know that there was no way that we could accomplish all of these recommendations in a two-year or five-year plan. It was a 10-year master plan. So, we definitely wanted to break it down to a plan that was about two years long. Some things we were very specific about in our objectives that we set forth. Some things we're working on, even though they may not even shown up on this. We've established committees to start working on some of these plans. And as recommendations have been made, we've already started to make some progress on these. So, you'll see in some of these, as I go through them, you'll see some of the actual things that we've already done that have been budgetary, you know, been put into the budget for this year, things that we've already set in place and motion, and then things we still got to work on as we go forward into this. So these were the four primary goals, and I gave you a copy of all of this presentation as well as a more detailed portion of the strategic goals. And you'll also see in the annual report that I left you as well, this was listed out, so that, you know, it's a public document for anybody. So, those four goals basically revolved around four different things. One, the first one being education. We knew that there were a lot of things that we needed to address in the education of the Fire Department, whether it was the basic education of our firefighters, FEOs, drivers, and captains, all the way up to succession planning for future chiefs, for future chief officers as our department grows. So, there are several recommendations to get us into that. The next goal we looked at was improvement of our emergency medical response. A lot of this was evolved around more of a dispatching nature, as you'll see, but one thing that also has evolved out of this is the ARCH program, which you had a presentation on last month, which really didn't show up into this because it was still in that pilot phase, but now is definitely becoming something that we'll probably start adding into our strategic plan as we look at it in the future. We looked at the third goal being things that would improve our department administratively, policy procedure, whether it's dealing with standard operating procedures or how do we deal with just normal, everyday city government types of things? How we deal with our business community, how we communicate with the community, how we communicate with our residents and the guests to our city. And then that fourth goal is, of course, looking at the deployment and the response to our city, that being one of the biggest things. How are we gonna put the big red trucks and the little red trucks out on the road? And where are we gonna put them at? How are we gonna house those folks? So these were the four major goals that we based our strategic plan on. As I break it down, basically, we tried to come up with at least three, two to three of the goals, objectives for each one of these. But as I kind of put these up here, just to give you context of how these read, is this first goal, or this first objective, 1.1, add staffing to the Training Division to assist in development delivery of comprehensive training program. That was recommendation 21 in our study. So when you see an R number, that, if you go, if you still have that book of the studies or from the study, that's that recommendation. And then, of course, it's also cross-referenced with the City of Independence Action Plan that you guys have developed as well. So you know where this falls in place with the action plan that you've put in place as a council as well. So, to give you an idea on this one, this is one that we've been working on very diligently. So it already has somewhat of a deliverable. There's still more to go, but basically what we did is we looked at some of the other recommendations that were in there. As you'll see in the bottom part of that, R-35, R-14, R-24, R-5, R-26. Basically, there were some other things that we needed to accomplish that, other than just adding training officers, we chose to add four battalion chiefs in each of our other divisions other than operations. So we added a battalion chief to our Services Division, a battalion chief to our EMS Division, a battalion chief to our Prevention Division, and a battalion chief to our Training Division. And what we did was, we said, we're gonna, these are gonna be multi-role positions. Not only will they have some primary work that's part of their division, such as ARCH or fire investigations or special projects like in buildings, but they're also gonna have training requirements. So if we have, like in Services, we bring in new equipment, that service battalion chief is gonna be one of those people that's gonna be out there in the field helping train our personnel on that. That gives, you know, an extra person that's doing that training. The EMS battalion chief is gonna be a lot more on the hands-on type of training in EMS that we don't have and that we lack, which is some of those recommendations. So we're trying to combine a lot of the different things that are in there. One of the things that the battalion chief of Prevention will be is increasing our investigation abilities, as well as our public education. And we're not the get-out-and-tell-the-kids kind of education, but let's tell the public about what we do as a department, public education, getting ourselves in social media, putting things out more about the department so people are aware of what the Fire Department is actually about. So that is actually a deliverable that is taking place this part of this budget year. Actually, they will be starting very soon. Goal 1.2 is conducting periodic skills testing. The deliverable here is, this is in the committee, obviously waiting for these battalion chiefs to come on. We had developed a training committee as well. We have a lot of good ideas with the committee. It's, now you just have to have personnel to put the, you know, the work together. So now they'll be able to put that together again. This is trying to develop that training all the way from the lowest level to the top level and making sure that it's something we can provide to our people on a consistent basis. Goal two objectives, I kind of put all of these on one slide, just to let you know these again. Goal two was kind of centered around EMS response. And what we have discovered or what we were recommended through our study was more based on things that happened in our dispatch, things that are, some decisions that need to be made, maybe in technology. We're continuing to work on those, beginning to start that discussion. They are, while they're a high priority, probably our deployment things were higher at this point for us. So those will be things that we'll be looking at pretty quickly. Now that we're handling some of the deployment and getting started into some of the building, we'll be switching back into this. We'll be looking, I'll be going to the City Manager. We already have a working relationship with the Police Department on dispatch. We have a working relationship with dispatch, and we have a working relationship with AMR. Now, it's trying to bring it all together so that we're all working together, maybe solve a few of these problems that might help us. And again, ARCH is one of those things that is, what we're finding is going to be a binding tool to this, because a lot of those things that ARCH, that are gonna be ARCH-based, start in that dispatching realm. So it's gonna be a big one. Goal number three objectives, 3.1 was continued collaborative organizational strategic planning as agreed by labor management. That was recommendation eight. Just so you know, that is a contractual, something that's in our contract, and it's something we've been very good and have had a good process of the labor management between both Fire and the Fire Department labor and Fire Department management. But really, what we're trying to accomplish is to make sure that as we do things like the strategic planning, as we do things like working on these objectives, that we're really working together as a department and as a labor management group to make these plans something that means something to all of us, that makes us prideful in doing our jobs. And that's really what that boils down to, is making sure that we're being very collaborative in the types of things that we're trying to do. We are continually looking at different ways to look at some of these we've created. The SOPs on our standard operating procedures on strategic planning and capital improvement planning, so everybody throughout the department knows. This is how we're gonna sit down every two years or every five years and work on a strategic plan. So if you're a brand-new firefighter coming in and say, "How am I gonna be involved in the next five years?", they know what that process is gonna be. If they wanna say, "Hey, I'd like to look at how to add new equipment to the department", they can sit down and now look at what that process that we're gonna go through in order to buy equipment, to what it takes for us to look at and make purchases for our department to keep us up to date. So we're doing that collaborative as a deliverable now. 3.2 is develop and publish an Independence Fire Department Standard of Cover. This is one of the things, R-37, that was brought up in there, and this was, that study itself was somewhat of a partial standard of cover. And what that means is, the recommendation is, is that we, as a city, rather than following a national standard like NFPA, we have the right through accreditation or just as a department ourselves to say what we think that standard should be. So, you know, right now, we look at response times as being like five minutes and 20 seconds of the 90th percentile. It is very, very difficult to get that. What a standard of cover does is it says, "Here's what our reality of our resources is, and this is what we want to strive to become." So, we will put together a committee of stakeholders throughout the community, including the legislative body, and we'll say, "This is really what we think our goals should be to move forward." It would be nice to be at five minutes and 20 seconds, but that's not gonna be practical at this time. But here's some things based off of our strategic plan that we think we can get it down to. And that's what the liability is, the, you know, the council members, you believe, the City Manager, what risk you're willing to take at that point. So that'll be coming forth. That's a process that in most departments usually takes about a year to go through a standard of cover, because there is a lot of data and considerations you do take into place. Like I said, this has a lot of it in there, so that's gonna help us out in the future. 4.2 is to add a battalion chief to each shift to increase our span of control. Right now, we have 14 companies getting ready to add the 15th company, which at this time, we only have one supervisor over all those companies, one battalion chief that's in charge of the shift. This was a recommendation to add an additional battalion chief to make sure that we have a better span of control over the supervision, not only on emergency scenes, but also in daily business that we deal with. And those battalion chiefs were put on duty... And those battalion chiefs were put on duty July 1st. Again, that was a budgetary item that we had brought into actually last year, but we didn't, while we had some of those positions in there, we tried to fill firefighter positions first before we did promotions, so that we didn't end up empty at the bottom, once we made promotions. So we've kind of put some of those off, and now we're moving forth on them. So we've had some changes in deployment that have also came about in this. The map here kind of shows before, basically, January, what our, our city looked like as far as coverage. You'll see that of, of the 10 stations that we had, only two of them were multi-company stations, Station 1 and Station 2, in the north and the south. And these stations are on the backdrop of a heat map that was part of that study, a five-year heat map, showing where the greatest amount of incidents were per square mile. So as we got the material back from the study, as we went back and analyzed a lot of the data, our committee that was dealing with the response and the deployment decided that we would make some changes in this, in how we're deployed across the city. So for our first decision in making deployment, what we've done is we've made some moves in apparatus to now make us to where we have five multi-company stations instead of just two. And that's just re, that's moving some of the, the apparatus around, and it's adding one additional company, which was in one of our recommendations, which I'll get to here in just a minute. But it actually moves more multi-company stations in that center hub or in that, that heat map area that maybe will bring down some of that response time for that area. We still have one major area that's not covered, which is going to be the Station 11, which is in a recommendation as well. The other reason why we probably didn't move any other companies at this point is the sheer housing. These stations that, that we have multi-companies in are about the only stations we can have multi-company stations. Everything else is still older, smaller, wouldn't be able to house that number of people. So 4.4, and I think I may have skipped one, let me go back. 4.1, I'm sorry, I jumped over a couple here. 4.1 was to build an additional Station 11 near somewhere in the area of 291 and 39th Street and staff it with appropriate apparatus. We're in the beginning process for that. We do have property that's available in that area, that was part of the Center Point Tiff that was still available, that was designated for that, so we have that available. However, that company probably isn't going to be able to be established until we have someplace to put them in. So that could take us another year to, year and a half to two years to get that, that process started, which we're starting into it now. We're in some current RFPs for, Adam, what is it? I forget what the name of the RFP that we did. Owners rep. We're, we're working on our owners rep right now, because this will be something between municipal service, us, and an owners rep to start that process. Okay, I talked about the battalion chief. And then 4.3 was to add an additional rescue and evaluate the role, additional services, and location of the rescue. So when I showed the map in there, the deliverable at this time was as we made those redeployments, rather than it be a rescue. We have two terms. We have rescues and squads. Rescues are the smaller apparatus that are on more of the pickup frame, and then we have a squad, which is more on the pumper frame. At this time, we're adding it as a squad, because we do not have any other apparatus available to add it as a rescue. So it will be going, the new rescue or squad will be going to Station 4, and that will be the additional one that will be going on here in just a couple weeks. So that'll be the first new company that we've added in years, 30 years or more. So quite a while. Again, the hope is, that's going to help with some of those response times. We're still going to be hurting a little bit in District 3 until we get Station 11 there, and hopefully we'll get that knocked out as well. Once Station 11 is put in and we've, we've gone through some remodels of other stations, that response committee will go back and relook at the new data of, of our response times and things that are, have changed around the city. And we may have to make another adjustment to where maybe those multi-company stations are, or maybe where our aerials are located, just make changes that, that may still be needed to make at that time. Okay, 4.4, which will kind of go with 4.1, is kind of hope to work them together, is to rebuild a combined Station 8 and an improved IFD training facility. This was out of three recommendations. One was, of course, rebuilding Station 8, and then the other one was to improve the training facility. As you knew, as you may have known, or may not have known, all the way back in 2004, when the tax first passed, it was in the plans in that tax to not only burn that training facility, or to have the burn tower and training facility out there, there was also to be a classroom facility and things that would go with it. Due to funding that was available, that was basically left out at that point. So what we're going to do is, we have property available that is right there at the training tower itself, right in front of the training tower. There's about 10 acres still in front. So what we're going to do is do both a station and a combined training facility there. So it'll be a little bit bigger station, but it'll be so that we can have training facilities there as well, give us a little bit of storage space for reserve apparatus and things of that nature, utilizing, again, things we already have, not going out and have to try to find new property or anything of that nature. That was the recommendation. It probably would have changed had we not seen the proposals going in along Little Blue Parkway. But with the, with that new development going along Little, Little Blue Parkway, that station needed to stay in that general area. Okay, so those are the, the, the major goals and objectives that we've got going right now. Like I said, there, while those were very specific to the recommendations right now, we're still working on a lot of the other smaller recommendations as well. Like I said, arch is, is in there, we're working on, we're currently working on redoing how we do prevention as far as our inspectors go. We're looking to improve the investigation process. That's one thing that we've really struggled with over the years, so we're looking at a new process there. Obviously, we've had to now start to build that arch program by adding a community paramedic component, as well as the supervisor for it. We've been working on, just, there's so many things that the last two months that we've been working on, I can't hardly name them, they, they're just tumbling around in my head like crazy, but we have been very busy. We're, we're all excited, and we're very grateful for the opportunity that the public has given us and that you've given us to be able to make our department grow. Any question?
Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I do have a sure question. Chief, you guys do an excellent job. I'm, I'm glad that this report is as thorough as it, as it is. One of the things that, I mean, we're, we're being rather progressive in how we're expanding the city and, and building and, and that, but the response times are, they're critical to not just you, but to homeowners, because if, you know, if, if we get outside of a certain response time, it costs homeowners more money for their homeowner's insurance. So the city needs to understand that with the capital that we're being, we're looking at to expand what you do, necessary services that you offer, the protection that we have to have as we grow our city, that the response times, they need to be dialed in, in order to keep our city affordable. So is, so just in listening, I'm, I'm wondering, is it too soon to talk about another station? I mean, we, we're talking about 11. I mean, how soon before we start talking about 12?
Well, I think that discussion will be in there. I think we need to see a little bit more of what the development on the east side of town's going to be before we do it. If, if we would do anything addition, it would maybe be something smaller on the west side to where it's maybe not a full engine type of station, maybe just an EMS component. That's been talked about before. But, you know, I think right now, we, we, we have to catch up with what we have first before we get that far ahead.
You have a full plate in terms of rebuilding.
I mean, I, I think in the 10 years to do the building part of this is going to be very difficult. I mean, because it's, it definitely suggests, and we know that it's needed, that not only is 8, 5, and, and 11 a high priority right now, but we have those three stations that are out east that are residential-type construction that also are going to need to be replaced before that 10 years, and we're going to be, we're going to be right on the, the cusp of being able to do it.
Yeah. And, and, you know, the, so, just so people know, it's going to be a major investment in fire that's going to be required, but this is, this is what happens when we've kind of neglected doing it over the years. So now we're at a point where we've got to make some hard decisions, we've got to borrow some money, we've got to rebuild, we've got to build, we've got to expand, not just with fire, but with police as well. So I, and I, just, just some kudos on the arch program. I, I've run into John two, three times, just down and about, and seeing what they're doing, and, and it's, it's, I'm excited about the program, and I'm, I hope that we continue to get updates and reports on it. I think, I think John's doing a fantastic job, and, and as he learns how to grow arch, I think it'll be very, very good. And, and so I, I hope that we'll continue this conversation, Mr. City Manager, that, that will keep, keep this, the public safety conversation alive. I know we never like to talk about the money aspect of it, but it's got to be there, because what it's going to cost the city, it's going to cost the residents. If we lack in our investment into public safety, our residents are going to pay through their homeowner's insurance. So it's going to be expensive either way. So we need to just, we just need to bite the bullet and, and make those decisions to invest and get ourselves up to speed. So again, I commend you. I haven't, I've sorted through much of it, but there's, it's pretty, pretty thick. I mean, there's a lot to go through there. So I appreciate your time and coming and sharing. I, I look forward to having more conversations on it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Please proceed.
So I'll be the, the budgetary nudge. You know that the city has some financial constraints, and they are going to increase as time goes on. And I just want us to be extremely thoughtful as we expand staffing. My understanding from reading the big fat book is that it's about a 20% increase in the number of staff in the fire department. And fire is extremely important. We called the ambulance and fire came for my mother-in-law this weekend, but I, I also want to be sure that we don't starve the other parts of the city, and we would hate to have a 20% increase in fire with a commensurate reduction in force in the other things that people expect. So I know that Mr. City Manager is spending a great deal of time worrying and obsessing about the budget, but we have to be able to balance those two things against each other. So thoughtful, measured, and just because it's on paper doesn't, you know, we can continue to say, okay, is this the best plan for our money, our limited resources, while still fulfilling the obligations we have to our citizens? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else have other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Chief Short, on the arch program, that, that maybe isn't a, or hasn't been a traditional that role for a fire department or our fire department. That's a new, new program, sort of a new...
That is kind of a new program across the nation. Not, we're not the first, but there are very few, maybe seven or eight programs that have been doing this.
Yeah, I know.
That we tried to model from.
Absolutely. I know Portland and Minnesota, Colorado, yeah. I, no, I was all over that when, and I was excited, super excited, that, that you guys were willing to take that on, very excited. So as much as you're willing to say publicly, how much, are, are you happy that fire's doing it?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I am. Actually, I, and I think Christina would probably agree with me, this was something that Christina and I spent many hours talking about as we dealt with COVID, and talked about different things for public health, and I think this was a passion to get this going.
Are you, and I haven't been through all your plans yet, or I haven't seen...
It was just my passion. It was John's work.
I know it was too. I know it was too, and I've talked to him, and I've talked to him in the past about some, and, and, and I was so very happy, and I can't believe he got a free, he got a van. Did he get a van or a truck?
Yeah, he didn't get a Mercedes, though.
No, I, where's Morris? He left again. He left again. Of course he did. I know he didn't. Are you, are you budgeting to expand that?
Yes. Yeah, one of the things in this year's budget that we're looking at is, we're probably going to have to have some software that is more EMS-intensive than what we utilize in the fire department, that's something that both us and the health department can use to share information and be able to use a lot of the data analytics off of. And then, basically, I've gave him a chance to tell me anything that he needs to get that thing growing.
Okay.
And, and we'll find a way to work it. The one good thing that we're, we're starting to find is that, that, that the state health department, as well as the federal level, is already starting to see a, a lot of these programs and starting to see it in a different light than through the DOJ's programs.
Yep.
So there is going to be some funding availability for us to make this grow.
You know...
It, it's all about making contacts is really what it's about.
It is, and you have to build these relationships, and it takes a while to make a dent in some of these issues for folks. And John's, I know, has learned that, and he'll, he's good at it, and will continue to get better at it, but, you know, it takes all these little efforts from all these different directions to sort of make a dent in some of these issues and help these folks, and it's so crucial. So it will make a difference in our neighborhoods, it will make a difference on our streets, and it will make a difference for these folks. So I, I'm just so very thankful, and I'm, thank you for being passionate about it, because it will make a difference for the residents of Independence, houseless, and, and for, for us in houses and for those of us that aren't. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions? I just have one kind of clarification, probably should have done this offline, but you're talking about the standard of cover study that you're going to be doing, and when was the last time it was done, and what are the major components that go into that, you know, just briefly? If we need to talk offline, if it's going to be a pretty extensive conversation, we can do it another time.
Well, I'll, I'll just, it won't take me long to go into it. It's never been done.
Okay.
Standard of cover is a component of accreditation, just like any other agency that could be accredited. Standard of cover is something that's... accredited. Standard of cover is something that's part of accreditation, and it's something that we've not worked on at the fire department. We have a lot of the components of a standard of cover, but we have a lot of components that we need to add into that to, to develop that. And then actually, potentially work towards accreditation as well. Because in today's world of, of how you're being rated in insurance, they, they look at ISO and accreditation. So, having accreditation and, and having an ISO-1 is always going to give you the best insurance coverage for, for your patrons. So that's why we're looking to go to that. Because if you're, if you have a standard of cover and you set a goal, you said, we have a goal, and we're going to try to achieve it. And that's what the insurance company wants to say. They don't want you to say, well, there's this goal out there, we don't really care about it. They want you to say, we can't get to that, but we think we can get to this, and this is what we're going to do to get to it.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Okay. With that, thank you very much, Chief Shore. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Uh, let's see. Next one is review and discussion of ethics. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
And I was just going to ask the group, should we take about a five-minute break? What's the thoughts? Everybody sound good on that? So how about we do a five-minute break, give us Meg time to get us hooked up, and we'll be right back.
Grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. We went six minutes and not five, so we get started. So, Mr. City Manager, how would you like to proceed on item number of the staff reports, review of discussion of ethics submitted by the mayor's advisory committee?
Uh, yes, again, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, just a brief reminder that on June 12th, the council was presented with the final recommendations of the mayor's advisory committee on ethics reform. We've had just shy of a month now to sit with that. And tonight, the city councillor, Jeremy Cover, is here, and thought, turn it over to him and help guide and facilitate that conversation.
Perfect. Thank you. Mr. Cover, proceed anytime you like.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the city manager said, this, you know, is the, the draft ordinance that has come from the mayor's advisory commission on ethics reform. As, as you all are aware, this is a very robust document. And so we, we've got sort of a couple of options that I'm gonna, you know, give to you all to see what your, your preference is as we sort to take what was their vision and, and make it your own. So one option is, we can, you know, kind of go through this section by section and, and just hear your feedback. And then based on that, we can, we would, you know, make changes in a draft document. Eventually, it would come, you know, once, once we've gone through all that, whether that's tonight or at more meetings, you know, we would take that draft document, do what we think you all, generally what we're hearing that, you know, that you all want to see with it, and then, and then give that to you as a, as a draft ordinance to then have, you know, have it a council meeting and go from there. The, the other option is that you all individually can send us your comments, and we can, you know, take those, and again, try to sort of, you know, build a consensus based on what we're hearing, and give you a, a draft document to, to work on. Or, if there's another, you know, again, at this point, this is your, your document to do something with. So if there's another path or another option that you all want to take, that's certainly up to you. So that's what I'm looking for right now, is sort of what, what direction do you want to go to start working through this document?
Any discussion?
So I've spent some time with the document. A lot of thought went into this, and I just appreciate the thoroughness. I know that there were discussions early on about whether this would be incorporated into the charter. My recommendation is that it's an appendix to the charter so that it can be modified over time as we kind of live with it and grow with it without having to go to a complete charter vote. I actually think they did a very nice job. And while there are some areas that I think need perhaps a modification and clarification, I'm, I'm okay with it. It's a base document for us to work from. So that's one opinion.
I agree. Anyone else? Other thoughts? I would like us to go, when we're talking about process, because your question was about process.
Correct.
And, and it's a great question, and I am delighted you asked it. This is my thought, that rather than us individually sending you a, a thought and having you design that thought, because that's just one council member saying, I would like to have this changed. I think it'd be a much more appropriate manner, and I'd love to have everyone's feedback on this, a much more appropriate manner to someone to say, send you a, an idea, and say, propose this idea. We then put that in amendment format, and then as we're drafting this document in an ordinance format, then we, that particular idea presented by a council member would in fact majority rule in order to put that idea into the document, rather than just having someone contact you and, and give it to you, unless I misunderstood. But that'd be, that'd be my preference, that it actually go through, you know, Robert's rules kind of process of being an amendment, added, proposed the amendment, have the discussion of the amendment, and then either vote it up or vote it down. That'd be my preference. But what's the, any other thoughts by the group? Would people be willing to, good with that? I mean, there's, there's good and bad with all of that, but, but there's good and bad with everything. But I think that's a fair process. That way, everybody can present ideas, but, you know, just permit it, propose to their colleagues and see if they can in fact get the support they need to get it into the document. Okay. That at least solves that issue, because then we'll, you know, present it to you, here's an idea, here's an amendment, and then you'd have to work at, because I know there are, there are tentacles that fit in this document that affect other sections. So obviously, as an attorney, you'd have to look at that.
Sure.
See how this, and then where else in the document does it impact it, where we need to make those changes to make that amendment. So, that'd be my thought on that. But, please proceed.
For clarification, are you asking that we propose the amendments, or we connect with Mr. Cover and say, these are things I am concerned about, what amendments would be possible?
Bingo.
Okay.
Absolutely, yeah. Because I, I think that would be fair. Mr. City Manager, any thoughts from your perspective on process?
I think that would probably be cleaner. I, I think the council should consider circulating, though, obviously following sunshine rules, some sort of red line document, so that, you know, if two council members make opposing suggestions to the same section, there would be familiarity among all council members that that conversation's taken place.
Yeah. And what would be your recommendation for us to share that information once Mr. Cover has, because let's say he's got two amendments at that point. I'm thinking about theory here. He's got two amendments at that point. One amendment adds something to section 11602, oh, oh, two, something withdraws it, but they also overlap with that. Then you're talking about basically two amendments, but having a red line that says amendment number one does this, amendment number two does this, but it takes away from here, this one adds to there, so that we would see both, both additions to subtraction on, if, if we were looking at either documents, what I'm hearing you say.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Does that, does that work for you, Mr. Cover? I mean, that's, it depends on the circumstance, it depends on the situation, but it would at least give us a, a basic framework to start from.
Yeah, we, we can make that work.
Yeah. Okay. Perfect. Anyone else have other thoughts on process? If there's no other thoughts on process, was your plan to actually kind of go, go ahead, council member?
Um, just, just a comment that I'm, I'm not opposed to what you're proposing. I guess what I'm a little bit, I, I thought we were going to do, and maybe I misunderstood, I thought we were going to kind of talk through these in a series of study sessions and talk through the, the different pieces of, of this proposed ordinance, you know, in a, in, in a study session, so that we could then, you know, kind of air our concerns as we go through. I'm not really opposed to it. It may be more efficient use of our time to do it the other way. But certainly, we're going to need to have, you know, on some of the items, I think, and, and I don't think there's going to be a lot, at least my opinion would be, there wouldn't be a lot. I, I kind of agree with Councilmember McCandless that, in general, it's a, it's a great starting document. There might be a few things that need to be tweaked. But, so I guess I'm not opposed to what you're suggesting. I, I just want to have an opportunity at the appropriate times to, to have, you know, some discussion in a public forum relative to, you know, just doing it in, in piecemeal.
No, that's a great point. And I think Mr. Clover and Mr. Walker, correct me if I'm wrong, and anyone on the dais, that was kind of our thought, was actually taking the document and going through it, you know, page by page, and to say, are there any items or discussion points on this particular page? And then, and have that discussion. I realize that's a tedious and process, but I think it's important to actually take it line item by line item, because this is important for the city. And that was kind of my vision of it. But I think you bring up a great point, Councilmember Fears. Anyone else have any objections to that? Were, were they in favor of that process?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
If I recall, we, we kind of asked that from your committee, and Mr. Blick was pretty strong in his opinion, that we, we don't, we shouldn't take it section by section, we should take the document as a whole. And that's kind of my, that's, that's, I thought if we were going to go on their recommendation, that's how we should probably look at the, the document and give it an up or down vote as it stands, since that, that was their recommendation, that we needed to not parse it out, not take it section by section, but look at the entire document and, and vote on it that way. Unless I misinterpreted what he said, but that's what I heard.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah, it would still be my pro, you know, and, and we could certainly hold off, but, you know, my interpretation was that we were going to go through this kind of page by page and say, hey, anybody have any concerns or notes on this particular page? And let's talk about it, so that we get a chance to publicly discuss it. Anyone else have any thoughts on that? Please proceed.
I don't know that we would approve it section by section, but I think for our discussion purposes, it makes sense to do them, and then we would vote on it as a document, like Mr. Blick said. I think his concern was, of course, that if you change something here and it flows through the document, that that would be problematic. But those would be questions that we would refer to Mr. Cover, to be sure that there was internal integrity in the document as we made changes.
Correct. I mean, if, if you all want to make changes, yes, there, there's a decent chance that that affects other parts of the document. So that's something we would need to, depending again on what those changes were, we would need to do a, a review to make sure that any related changes are also appropriately made throughout the document.
Okay. So how would you like as a group to proceed?
Are we putting a time limit on tonight? Because.
Yeah, I'm not going to go past eight o'clock.
This is a long document.
Right. It is, it is a long document and I may call the time limit on this one real quickly here and then make us go to the dangerous dog ordinance and then revisit this one at the next study session. But this gives everybody a chance to look at it, get some thoughts, but I would like us to at least see if there's any concerns on any of these pages. That way we can all discuss an amendment prior to it being presented to Mr. Cover and brought back. But that's my thoughts. Anybody else have any questions or, or concerns about it? So with that being said, uh, I'll follow the advice of Councilmember McCandless and say, hey, let's, uh, set this aside right now. Let's go to the dangerous dog ordinance that we can get out of here by eight o'clock. That's what'd be my preference and we can come back and talk about it. So I'm good with that. If anybody else has any other concerns.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I, I'm just, I'm just confused as to where we're at. Are, are we going to, uh, go through this ourselves and make amendments and send them to Mr. Cover? Or are we going to have, you know, discussion, you know, as a group in council sessions? I, I, we've talked about both of those two things tonight. I'm not clear, at least at this point, what direction we're, we're thinking we're going to go.
No, that's a great question. And this is my perspective on clarity. Uh, we'll set it aside tonight, but it would be my preference, if there is no objections from anyone else on the council, that we would take it page by page to say, does anyone have any concerns about this page? And let's talk about the item, because there was lots of discussion when this group met and this is a pretty comprehensive document and it would give us all this an opportunity to look at it individually. It'd be my preference is to actually take it page by page and then see if anybody has any written concerns. I mean, I have already made some notes of issues that I'd like to change, but I want everybody to be aware of it and my reasoning behind it, so.
Maybe, Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Maybe we just, um, going forward, um, just for each subsequent meeting, just designate a few certain pages ahead of time for each agenda to pages one through three, one through five, whichever.
Right.
And just have those marked off ahead of time and people can be prepared ahead of time and maybe that's the slickest way to do it.
Uh, I agree with you because as you can see on the agenda tonight, it was sections, or excuse me, divisions one, two, and three. Uh, Mr. Walker wisely recommended that. I liked his idea, uh, that we would just, you know, restrict our discussion to those three discuss, those three points. But from a lack of time tonight, I really don't want to go past eight o'clock for this meeting.
Sure.
And so, uh, you know, set this aside, have our discussion about dangerous dog ordinance. But I agree with you. I think we should actually go, you know, section by section. If we want to go section by section, I'm fine with that, but I think we should be able to allow everyone to have their opportunity to bring up their, their concerns or their issues so we can have a, a public debate about what, how we would proceed. If that, if that, if, if you and I are on the same hymnal, same page.
That's right. And I think, I think putting on the agenda the very specific.
Mm-hmm.
Parts so that it's limited, people know ahead of time, that's probably the slickest way to do it.
Right. And if we only get, next time, we would, we would actually put this item back on the agenda for the next study session if you could, Mr. City Manager, uh, which would be on?
August fourteenth.
Well, don't we have one at the end of this, another two weeks from now?
You don't have one called for. You have the option to schedule one on July twenty-fourth.
Yeah. What's your thoughts on that, July twenty-fourth?
I won't, I personally won't. I'll be, uh, out of town. I could, I might be, I might have internet, but you could do it either way.
Okay.
I can always put my thoughts in or something if I need to, but, and I don't need to be here anyway, so, I mean, I have no objection to it.
Okay.
Personally.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I was just going to mention, I was going to be out of town as well that day, but I should have internet if I can get it remotely if necessary.
You will have internet, you think?
I think I will.
Yeah, I know. When you go to some places, you do and you don't. Sometimes it's not very fast and all that kind of stuff.
I'll be treasure hunting, so I don't know if I'll have internet.
You didn't have to describe, you don't have to give your excuse of what you're doing. But I would just, uh, we'll see.
Don't we have a strategic meeting at the end of the month, too?
Uh, that's thirty-first, isn't that right?
Well, that's, I mean, that's like five meetings in one month.
That's correct. Um, July thirty-first, the council, uh, is planning to have their quarterly strategic roundtable.
I would still like to proceed unless there's a strong objection.
I would like to hold off till the first study session in August if we could, please.
Any further discussion on that?
Would we be able to dedicate the entire study session?
To just this document? That would be my preference.
On August fourteenth? And that way we could get through the lion's share of it?
Yeah, I believe, I don't, at this moment, I'm not aware of anything pressing or urgent that was planned for the fourteenth. If that changes, I'll certainly advise the council.
Um, I would, I would make this compromise suggestion. If we do. I would make this compromise suggestion. If we do put this off to the fourteenth, that we would in fact meet what would be the, uh, the fourth Monday that we take, we plan in August to go through the entire document and we would, and would we have anything else on the study sessions at that point in August that you know of?
Um, I don't have that document in front of me, but offhand, I'm not recalling anything.
Okay. But if, if there are things that we could push back to September and just take this document, let's get it done. Does that sound good?
Yeah, that, that.
Would that be, any of it with everyone, that we, the study sessions in August, just be assigned to this document to get it finished?
So you, you'd be the study session on August fourteenth and another one, and then you'd call another one August twenty-eighth, is that correct?
Right. And both of those would be clear the, the deck and the only thing on the table would be the Ethics Committee report. If it's all possible to do that.
And then do I still, um, the page number division, so of the thirty-three pages, equally split those between the two meetings?
Right. Because I think, uh, and I would set it up for this one, it, to make a suggestion for you, I would go ahead and list divisions one through five, um, in the, the first meeting and then six through, through, uh, and if we don't get all the way through five, then we repost it for the second meeting to everything from the, you know, wherever we finished, maybe division five all the way to division eight to finish it up. You see what I'm saying? So we're going to put a, a bigger lion's shares of the pie cut to the first meeting. If we do in fact get through all of that, we'll stop and then come back and finish the last three divisions.
I see.
You see where my logic is here?
Yep.
Because we had kind of talked about that before, so making sure we've got enough on the, the agenda to make sure we've got it covered.
Yep. I, I was looking at the table of contents and I see that. Yep.
Okay. Um, so that's what we'll plan to do. We will not have a meeting, a study session at the end of this month, but we will have two study sessions and they'll be exclusively designed for this document unless Mr. City Manager informs us that we've got to absolutely visit something on a study session. Does that sound fair, Mr. Walker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Clover, you see any concerns with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, anyone else, other questions or comments? All right. Let's put this document aside and then, uh, Mr. City Manager, let's go ahead and, and do the discussion on the dangerous dog ordinance and.
Certainly. So last week, uh, the council had first reading of the ordinance that was prepared at the council's direction following, um, the vote by council to repeal breed-specific legislation that moratorium, of course, runs through August the fourth. So the intent right now is to have second reading next week at the July seventeenth meeting in advance of that moratorium expiring. Um, the ordinance came in the agenda item for the council, uh, came with a memorandum that was prepared by, uh, one of the attorneys at Lawber Municipal Law, which is of course where Mr. Cover works. Um, that memorandum summarized, and I'm kind of paraphrasing for the council here, that much of the suggestions that were, um, initially suggested by council, it was the opinion of, uh, the legal team that many of those provisions were already found in city code. Uh, and there was some concern that if those were added in there, they would become duplicative, um, uh, redundant items in city code. Um, so that was kind of the first blush from legal. However, um, this study session was asked for tonight to get additional feedback from the council about things that, uh, from your perspective as our governing body, might be imperative to have in there, uh, so that we could prepare amendments as needed, uh, for the meeting, uh, next, uh, Monday night. So, uh, Mr. Cover's here to help answer any questions, as well as our Health and the Animal Services Director, Christina Hyman, uh, but we're here to collect any feedback that the council has to make sure we get the ordinance you want to see.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Mr. Walker, uh, one of the, uh, amendments that I would, uh, like prepared, uh, under the, I think it's the vicious dog, sort of the last resort, uh, the, the way that the ordinance is currently written, it gives the judge discretion, uh, whether to allow the dog to leave the city or be destroyed. Uh, I would like that, and I, I discussed this, uh, with Mr. Langford at, at some short length, uh, after some of the earlier meetings, but I would like an amendment prepared where it become, it, that the option for the judge to remove the animal from the city is, is removed. That, 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 uh, it become, uh, only one option for the judge, that if the judge finds that the animal fits the criteria, that it is just, the only option is for the animal to be, to be destroyed. Does that make sense?
It does. Pardon me, just making sure I get those notes accurately recorded to reflect your will. So yes, I, um, taking away the discretion that's presently in the code of destroying the animal that's been found vicious or moving to where there's only one option, which is...
It is. I want to, I want to take the burden, frankly, I want to take the burden off of the judge's shoulders, because it can be awfully, having, having been in, in the courtroom many a times when a judge has to make a really hard decision like that, it can be awfully hard for a judge to make that decision while the owner is, and the family is crying there for their family pet not to be destroyed. And I don't want the judge to have to make that decision. And I also don't want a dog that has severely injured somebody to be passed on down the road, uh, to then injure somebody else in another town. So, um, our judges shouldn't have to make that decision. Um, and that's the intent behind that.
Did you have something? Oh, we're, yes, we're good.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Um, um, I don't, I don't know who to even address this one to, but the, the three hundred thousand that, that was in there, the, the insurance liability coverage, three hundred thousand, how did we arrive to that?
Um, at this point, I don't remember where that number came from. I'm sorry.
Okay. Because I proposed a much larger number, uh, understanding that I, I asked what the medical bills back in two thousand and five was on the one attack.
Okay.
Three hundred thousand wouldn't even have covered, uh, wouldn't even have put it in. It, it was well over a million dollars and that was in two thousand and five. So, you know, I didn't know if there, and, and I, we'd talked about even including the city somehow, and I don't know, Jeremy, how we would do this, um, where the city becomes like, um, the recipient of that, to make sure that the, the money's distributed properly, the medical bills, all the things that, that happened there, that, that they're paid and, and taken care of. So I didn't know if that was a legal issue as well. I would like language in there if there's a way to do it. And I'm not sure how to do it, but I think that the city should, should have, um, the ability to ensure that any, any liability payout is paid through the city and those medical bills are paid from those funds. But I don't think three hundred thousand's going to, that's not how you're going to put it in it if we have an incident like we had.
Okay. I, I can look at the, the second issue on the, on the, on, as far as the number goes. I think Ms. Hyman has a little more insight on that than I do.
Health and Animal Services Director, Christina Hyman. Um, so the three hundred thousand, I think, is just mirrored from where it is in the dangerous and vicious code, and so they moved it over to the aggressive to mirror that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we can look at updating that number and increasing it across the board for that section of code.
I'd appreciate it. I'd like a, I don't know if there was a state, if what, if a state statute kind of capped it, but if there is, I'd like a cap, whatever the max is, but I, I proposed, uh, you know, something up to a million dollars. Uh, medical bills are not going to be chief and, uh, with any attack. It doesn't mean that everything's going to cost a million, but God forbid we have another incident, it could exceed that easily. So, um, if there's a way to amend it and if we can agree upon that amount, I just don't think three hundred thousand is, is, I don't think that's responsible. So if, if there's a way to, to make sure that we, we can do that, so.
Thank you. Anything else?
We can definitely make the amendment.
Sure.
Yeah.
All right.
The rest of the legalities we'll look into.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Uh, please proceed.
It, it might be worth checking to see if they will even write a policy that high. Um, it may be that policies are capped by the majority of insurance companies at a certain amount, so, um, we, we shouldn't, I'd, I'd appreciate a little follow-up on that. Um, and then, I'm sorry, you did.
No, I was going to say, I, I've asked, I have a, I have a lady in, in our district, in my district, that, uh, works in the insurance industry. You can have a blanket coverage, um, on your property for a couple hundred bucks a year that can go up to, you know, into the millions. And, and so it's not that difficult to get. And, and so it can, it can cover any, any type of incident, damage, um...
Umbrella.
Yeah, it's an umbrella coverage and I think that, that, that can be done and it's economical. So if we need to be specific, we can do that.
Understood.
On item L, uh, it says, prior to transferring ownership of an aggressive dog, the owner must inform the prospective owner that the dog has been declared aggressive within the city. Can we add in there or shelter operator? Uh, because we may be the custodian of that dog and I want to be sure that the new owner, uh, would know that that dog had been deemed aggressive.
Uh, and I'm not seeing any concerns with that council member.
Okay. Um, sorry, I have another question. Um, on, there's a section in here that, that talks about these animals, that you had to provide four color photographs, two profile photos of the left and right sides, one front view, one rear view of the dog, clearly showing the color markings and appropriate size of, or approximate size of the dog. Where are those kept? Are those kept in the animal control division?
That is kept in, Pet Point is our software that operates for the shelter and animal control and they're kept there, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, I think those were all of my questions. Thank you very much.
Um, and also I'd just like to say, Councilmember Steinmeier, I agree completely with you. I, I would be absolutely in favor of voting on an amendment for a million dollars. I think that's a very reasonable approach and I agree with you. I don't think it's unreasonable. Once you've had a dog that's been, you know, declared dangerous, the question is ultimately, you know, would your insurance company put the rider on once they've had a dog that's declared dangerous? Because it's kind of like buying homeowner's insurance for a fire and part of the house is on fire, so.
And that, that would be a safeguard for us as a city, too.
Absolutely right.
Then the dog wouldn't probably not be allowed to be a pet in our city if they can't get coverage.
Right. Yeah. So I, and, and that would be something the judge and then you would work with on, on that. Okay. Anyone else have other comments or discussions?
You know, that's a, pardon me, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Um, that's a good point. Is, is there, if, if, if there's a failure to meet one of these conditions, is, is there a contingency that that can no longer be a pet within our city? Are they denied a license or registration or?
So they are required by the ordinance to meet those criteria and to bring those items to the shelter within so many days or to animal control within so many days. Failure to do so means that tickets can be written and they're back before the judge. Failure to do so means that tickets can be written and they're back before the judge, it doesn't automatically revoke it, but they are required to do that, or else they're back before the judge answering why that wasn't done.
And ultimately, after two rounds, ten rounds, three weeks, five weeks, six months, what's the, what, how would that play out in, in your mind?
So are you saying if they go before the judge and they still don't comply? I mean, we can, in the state of Missouri, animals are possessions, they're owned by a person, so we need that due process in order to remove that ownership, so I would need a judge to make that call, or for a warrant to go in and remove the animal and bring them to the shelter and then, and force compliance.
So can we, do we need to write that into our ordinance, then, if there's X number of non-compliancees in a certain amount of time, or...
So there already are sections in here that talk about compliance and failure to comply, and the violations and what happens, there's also other sections about animal control's ability to impound an animal if need be, so we do have some of that written in, it's just scattered in different places throughout.
So do we need to make, my, my question is, does it just need to be more painfully obvious? Do we need to make it very clear that if you have three non-compliances in a year, in two years, with the same animal, in the life of your ownership, if, I mean, let's, let's make it painfully obvious, if, if you have an animal, and if it's been deemed dangerous, or one of these other categories, that we will ultimately take it away from you, and it's over. I mean, if you're not gonna get it insured, if you're not gonna get it at shots, or have it in public, or to tax a dog, or a person, or these other things, that we will come and take it from you.
Well, and, I mean, the way...
I don't, I don't want any gray areas.
Yeah.
That's, that's a big part of the problem that people have, you know, in this realm.
And ultimately, of course, as you were discussing the destruction of the animal earlier, or removal from the city, the judge has that ability in each of these cases, when these cases come before the judge, to make that call. You know, our biggest problem in the past, I, I don't know if Mitchell agrees, is getting the people to court to be able to go through those processes, and normally, yes, that warrant and bringing the animal into the shelter is what is needed to, to force that compliance.
So, you know what, there was one other thing, Mr. Walker, pardon me, Ms. Heinen, Mr. Walker, there was Liberty, somebody mentioned that Liberty had a statute that put more onus on the owner. City Liberty, you remember that, Mr. Langford?
That was Councilmember Fears that brought that up.
Did we take a look at that? I never took a look at that, did you take a look at that?
This, this is, I'm reading from the memo prepared by Lawber.
Oh, where, that's already in there, I didn't, okay.
It, well, this, it says, "There was offered for consideration a section from the Liberty Missouri Code of Ordinances, Section four dash two, Minimum Fine for Certain Violations Reckless Owners. It is the opinion of the legal department that the independent city code already imposes similar penalties for violations of its dog ordinances. Therefore, this draft has made no additions or changes to the current code regarding penalties for violations of this ordinance." So, again, if the council wants to have additional language, that, that's your responsibility as a governing body, but the advice from legal counsel is, that's already covered.
It's already covered.
And you may recall, when the council was considering the breed-specific legislation itself, the petition, the council received some feedback from ASP...
CA.
CA, EIO, yeah, and they told you that by and large, your ordinance was in pretty good shape, they made some suggestions of what, you know, may need to be amended, but it's not necessarily a bad thing to feel some pride that our ordinance is by and large in some good shape, with some extra teeth inserted into it.
Anyone else, or anything else?
Mr. Mayor. Just one more question, if I could.
Please proceed.
The, when, when data is entered into, for, in a chip, in the dog, does it go into a database that you have access to?
Yes and no, if we're the one who, you know, that the microchip was embedded by us, then yes, we have access to that, because that's our information that's sent to the microchip company, however, for the most part, the microchip company is the owner of that, they're private companies, we have to call them or check their website to get basic information from them, and owners can put privacy holes on all of that.
How do we then enforce the issue with the chip and the information that, that's in there? How do we, as a city, know that they're current on shots, that they have, that they're registered, so, I mean...
None of that is tracked in a microchip, isn't going to hold the owner's name, their address, their phone number, email, and usually the implant facility, so whoever actually microchipped the animal, and that, that's it.
That's it.
There's nothing else, really, and for my animals who have separate, different microchips, that's all that's covered.
And that's fine, but how do we enforce the, the chip issue, to know who the owners of these dogs are? I mean, if you, if you take one off the street and you can scan the chip, do you have the ability to find out who the owner is?
So, as a registered shelter, I can call up, and as long as I'm on a shelter line, they can see who's calling, I can identify myself and give our shelter number, and they'll release that information to me. Normally, if you're John Q citizen, you're out there, and you've scanned an animal, you'll call and they'll essentially send an alert to the owner of the animal, that, and they'll gather your information to give to the owner.
Okay.
They don't normally give that information over to the finder.
So how do, how do we, how do we enforce the issue of the, of the chip in the dog?
We can write tickets for microchips not being updated, but we have to find out.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
It's, sometimes it's difficult, a lot of the times, we had a case just this last week, where we had an animal that was microchipped, we called the registered owner, they gave us the contact information for the person they rehomed to, we called them, they gave us the information for the person that they rehomed to, and, yes.
Well, yeah, I think, I think the chips are important to have in them, but I don't know how we're gonna actually, I mean, it's just something we're gonna throw out there and go, well, we can't enforce it, so again, you know, we're, we're just, it's words on paper, so it doesn't, doesn't serve a lot of purpose there, but we, I think we have to come up with a better system to where we can ensure that these pets are being registered donors, that they're up to date on shots, and, and they don't serve a, as a, as a problem or menace in, in a neighborhood or community. I don't know how we're gonna do that, and that's been the whole issue, we've got ordinances in place, but how do we enforce them? So we're kind of still battling the same issue.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
My understanding is independence doesn't require a license and a chip for dogs within our city limits.
Correct.
Which many cities do, and...
Many do.
So you, I mean, we have that option.
We need to amend it to say that.
Well, but that, I mean, that's, that's a whole different discussion, because that's the entire population of dogs, you'd have to, we'd have to work with our vets, because that's normally where the fee is paid for the license, et cetera. I think it's worthy of a discussion, I don't, I don't know that it belongs in the dangerous dog ordinance, since that's a, a citywide conversation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, do you have a comment, Mr. Walker? You just looked like you had a thought or something. Anyone else, other thoughts or ideas on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Fears, or Councilmember Fears, please proceed.
Yeah, just a, a couple of comments briefly, so I'm, I'm in full agreement with the discussion I've heard relative to the, you know, take, giving the, the, taking the discretion away from the judge that Councilmember Homart mentioned, with additional insurance that Councilmember Steinmeier talked about, I'm in full agreement with that. I just do have one piece of clarification I want, as I look at this ordinance and, you know, the, the documentation, you know, this talks about that we are, you know, modifying Section three point oh, three point oh oh seven, which deals with aggressive dogs. It doesn't do anything with oh oh eight, which is dangerous dogs, or oh oh nine, which is vicious dogs. I, I think that I understood that we are expected to receive some amendments for those as well, is that correct, or am I incorrect in that?
Excuse me?
Yes, if we go ahead, if the, it's the will of the council this evening to adjust the insurance amounts, to change the vicious portion, to remove the discretion from the judge, yes, we would bring those forward.
So, so to be...
Okay, well, so I'm, I'm in, you know, I'm in agreement with that part, and, and, you know, my understanding of the, of the discussion we had relative to the, the, the ordinance Liberty has in effect relative to owners, was that we might be able to, you know, do some, you know, find, find the owners additionally through that additional ordinance. Now, I don't wanna duplicate, you know, ordinances or codes just for the sake of duplicating, and that's not helpful at all, but I do think that if we can levy some additional fines for people who, you know, continue to not be responsible owners of their animals, then I'm all in favor of that, and so that's what I thought I heard, maybe that's, maybe the, the letter that we received from Lawber indicated that that was not the case, but I thought that was two separate things, so, you know, so I, I guess I'm, I'm interested in some information on that.
Yeah, we, we can take a second look and see, and make sure there's not another part of that Liberty code section that, that we're missing, so clearly, it, it was considered and it was addressed, but at this point in time, I can't say that, you know, exactly what, you know, pieces we went through, and if there was something that we could take a second look at, so we can, we can do that before the, the second reading you have next week.
Yeah, that, that, pardon me, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, that was ringing a bell, Councilmember Fears, with me, too, it was, it was a matter of not just putting a fine on for the behavior of the dog, it was also, then, since we're limited by Senate Bill Five and some of these other things, then being able to essentially add an additional fine on the dog owner in order to increase the total fine amount, in other words.
Okay, yeah, we, we can take another look at that.
Yeah.
Thank you, anyone else? But I think we can, we obviously still need to do some work on this to get it up to, to speed, so, anyone else have any other comments, though, before we proceed, and call the meeting adjourned? Anyone else? Mr. City Manager, any thoughts, any final thoughts on this?
No, I appreciate the robust conversation from council, and we'll continue to work to refine this issue.
Very good. With no other discussion on this, that's the end of our agenda, and we'll call this meeting adjourned, thank you.